I see no hands. So still seeing no hands, we will again close public comment and move on to our executive session for purpose three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Winchester Education Association. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on bargaining position of the committee. So if we could have a motion.
Motion to adjourn to executive for reasons stated and that we will return to public session.
I heard Mr. Brady for a second, so.
It may be a bit if people are here to listen to our regular meeting, we'll be back around five fifteen, right? Up there it is.
Just posted.
All right, so we have a roll call though, so Mr. Nixon.
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Aye.
Mr. Brady.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and so that's unanimous since Ms. Ball nice isn't here yet. And so we will go to the executive session and be back around fifteen.
You should have that invite now in your inbox.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with everyone back here, I will reopen the meeting at four fifty-two PM and move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. Good to see you. It was, it's been a busy couple of weeks. We started today with our, actually, we started yesterday with our administrative workshop, leadership workshop, which we had a great day, great discussion. I'll share a little bit of that in a little bit. And then today we had new teacher orientation, and I'll have either Jen or Lori or both speak to that in a second. And then just a couple of things beyond that, we do have just a reminder that we are starting with teachers as professional development days on Tuesday, the fifth, Wednesday, the sixth. And then the first day of school for our kids will be on Thursday, the seventh. And that's a, it's an early release day for K through five. And then just K through five, and then on Friday kindergarten will have, has another early release, but grades one through twelve will be fully in, for a full day in session. So the things are, things are happening, the energy is great. And Lori, you want to just speak to the new teachers, which I thought was just what great.
So today it was a great day. We welcomed about forty new staff members and we were seventy and I am sorry, just a minute.
While she steps away, I'll just say, you know, welcome back, everyone. And I know the Lynch community went over and saw their new space and, and you know, there's a lot of energy and vibrancy there in the building as everyone's, you know, finding out where their teachers are going to be and things, so it's good to be back. Lori, are you ready?
I am, thank you very much, my well-trained dog. So we had a total of seventy new staff members, thirty ESPs joined us this morning as well as roughly forty staff members. And the great news in all of this is that this is the group that we will be working with throughout the year. Most of our hires are done, it's, we have very few left, so that's very exciting. And it was just a wonderful opportunity to kick off the year and start to make the connections and the relationships that are just so important in the work that we do. So they had an opportunity to connect with their new colleagues across the district as well as leaders. And I would like to specifically give a shout out to the year one mentor leaders. The, for the elementary, it's Melissa Testa and Paul Di Benedictus. At the middle school, it's Karen Fagan and Lori King. And at the high school, Scott Spencer and Tanya Federata are leading the charge. And I have to say, they really are listening and learning from the proteges that they've had the opportunity to work with the, in the past. And they're making recommendations to make this program even stronger. So this morning, the all year one mentor leaders met with all mentors across the district and kind of just kicked off the year. This is who we are, this is what it takes to be a good mentor and how we can best support our staff. Because if we have learned anything, it is that education is changing. And the number of people that are going into education, the numbers are dwindling as we're very well aware. So we're excited by the new hires, but the real challenge is retaining them. So working and making those connections right from day one is so critical. And I have to say, the energy in the room was just palpable. And at the end of the day, you know, it was like you had some nice old friends already there, so. And we had a lovely luncheon that was co-sponsored with the WA, WA who joined us. And we had some, you know, some swag that we gave away as well, so it doesn't, it doesn't get better than that. So I think we're off to a great start and we're looking forward to learning and growing alongside them throughout the course of the year. Did I miss anything, Jen?
I just wanted to add too, like, it's such a difference from when we would do this like six or seven years ago. And when we talked about your supports to the new teachers, especially at the elementary, their supports were like so limited. It's like you have your building administrator and a half and us. And it's so different now when we can talk about all the coaches with the SEL, with the ITS, the coordinators. We put up the coaching document and everybody's like, wow. So, and then they come back and they tell us how welcoming all of those people have been and how supportive, so. That's like one of the things that's just such a huge difference than it used to be of. I, to Lori's point, like, we really worry about retention and they continually give us feedback on what those supports mean to them and the directors at the secondary level. So I just want to say thank you for those positions that have really, really supported them. And also a shout out to Wiffy who did the breakfast this morning, so it was a banner day in education. We had a breakfast and a lunch, so.
A little bait and switch, just kidding.
Just to pick up on what Jen just said, just reminded me that we have several ESPs, a former ESPs who have, who we have hired into full-time professional teaching roles. And one of them in particular said that, basically what he was saying was that it's the understanding that, of what that support looks like that gave him the feeling that he was, he was ready to be able to step into that position. So not only is it just a, you know, great for, a tool for new people coming in, but also with our internal people and we hope to continue to be able to hire ESPs and hopefully have them step into teaching positions. It's just, you know, it's, it is one of those things that's just out there and I think we're, we have a good reputation for it. So, and thanks to both Lori and Jen for not only the work getting that together, but also for their help yesterday with the leadership team meeting. We also wanted to, I just wanted to have Andrew to speak quickly to, we did have a transportation letter went out today. Andrew, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. We sent out a letter to all those families who registered for transportation. So that letter includes their morning and AM bus stop and bus route. And later in the week, probably tomorrow, so we'll be sending out invites to bus ride. And once they log into that, then they'll see their estimated time of arrivals for each student. So there's information that email if there's, if they're registered in the spring and they want to change things, they can just email the transportation email provided and we'll make sure to change it.
And not to ruin the surprise later on, Andrew, but can you just speak to Lynch and And not to ruin the surprise later on, Andrew, but can you just speak to Lynch in terms of the transportation? And we have we have numbers on ridership there and also just district wide.
Sure. Yeah. So overall, it's about nine hundred and eighty-six total registrations, K to five or K to twelve, three hundred and nine of which are for Lynch. So it's the majority of the school there.
Right, which is great.
Yep.
Yeah, and having having looked at the the roads and the traffic patterns around the new Lynch at Parkhurst, you know, for those last few who haven't signed up for the bus. That'd be a smart thing to do in the next week or so because it's going to be much, much easier for you and for everyone. If if people ride the bus there rather than snarl up that neighborhood with cars.
Good plug. What just a couple, just a couple more things, Mr. Chip, I could just to mention that the commissioner had a conference call with all superintendents last week. There were a few things that he went through, but one of the things I just wanted to mention because, you know, we're we're not done with COVID. And we're starting to see Middle Six County right now, since some of the numbers are rising a little bit. But they if Dussie and both Department of Public Health Massachusetts, there's no change in any of the any of the protocols. It is as we left in June. So essentially masks masks are always are always a possibility and optional for anyone who wants to wear them would fully support that. And we would encourage, continue to encourage people to get the vaccine, although from my limited knowledge of of the the new vaccine that's coming out, I believe it comes out in later in the fall for and apparently will be addressing what I understand to be a new variant. So I had a meeting with Lynne Vazella tomorrow, our new director of nursing, and we'll be going over that and a few other items. And parents can expect by the end of this week, an additional message from from me in the in the district on just providing some updates on getting back to school. So with that, I am done unless anyone has any questions.
Just a thank you to Lori and and Jen and all of Central Office for their work with the staff and with building our mentoring program. In the news, we hear a lot about the difficulty attracting new teachers to the profession as well as retaining the ones that are so experienced and can be so valuable to keeping our district rolling too. So I appreciate their work on both ends of that spectrum and particularly with staff new to the district. They they are getting a positive impression of Winchester right from the start and know that they are supported here. And I think that's kind of half the battle. So thank you.
Excellent. So no other comments. Thank you, Dr. Hackett and team. We'll move on to our consent agenda. There's a number of items on here that are all in your packet. And unless anyone wants to pull something off for discussion, we can take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Roll a call vote because we're on Zoom. Mr. Brady.
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Aye.
Excellent.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We've approved the consent agenda. Thank you.
Can I just make a brief comment, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I want to thank I want to thank the administration for just kind of cleaning up and getting some consistency between the McCallan High School handbooks on some of the things we talked about last meeting. Big difference. Looks really good.
Thank you. And I would be remiss if I didn't give a huge shout out to Aaron Allen in my office, who is format master and has and actually spent a lot of time comparing and contrasting to make sure that we cleaned it up as as best we could. We'll continue that work, but I I appreciate their comments.
Excellent. So we'll move on to reports, updates and action items. The first item is consideration of co-curricular review committee proposal. Dr. Hackett, do you want to?
Certainly. So as you remembered your last meeting, the co-curricular stipend committee presented to you their recommendations for both short term for this year as well as for gave you a timeline for what they were looking at coming back to you later to discuss some proposals for future years. The proposal for this year and future years, actually, what in terms of just they've gone through the activities that are on the stipend list in the contract. They've made recommendations to eliminate those that just have not run for various reasons. And they've made recommendations to update or include some that that should be running that are now have really kind of have a critical mass or there is also known interest in in starting them. So that piece of the work I would anticipate would would stay the same in future years, but they'd like to make that change now, which I think is a good thing to do as it's really just kind of cleanup. And additionally, they they were recommending some changes in stipends, a couple of the existing, but also with the additions of those that they would that they are anticipating would run this year to include stipends for those. If you look at the total schedule, the net would be that the schedule itself would would indicate that this would save us money. But when you consider that a lot of the ones that we're removing actually have not run. It would just, I think, our worst case scenario around that is is about eighty eighty-five, nine thousand dollars for this year. We know that we can do that within the budget just based on history with our stipends in that account. And I would recommend that you approve as presented.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Mr. Nixon.
So I move that the committee approve the co-curricular review committees stipend schedule for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as presented in our packet tonight. And thank the committee for all their work.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Aye.
Mr. Nixon.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So that motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is update on facilities. Dr. Hackett, do you want?
I will. Let me just stop sharing for just a second so I don't make people nauseous with flipping through slides or myself anyway, speaking myself. Okay, hopefully you can see that. Andrew, what you want to just take us through these next few slides?
Sure. So let's see here. And so in front of you is just example of the the letter that went out to families today around three thirty. So you can see that it's a general overview confirms their student and what school they're going to. And then the morning and and afternoon bus, along with some additional information about bus ride and what it's all about. And then information to contact us there. That's it. So. Let's see here. So on the park, Lynch at Parkhurst, this is our kind of working final draft here for kind of traffic patterns. So we'll be working with the school to communicate this to families along with the town to add some additional signage in the area. You can see on the top right, off of Westland Ave, we're requesting all families that are coming onsite to access Parkers through Worthing Road or Atherton Road. And then proceed kind of down Emerson to Samuel Set. Drive off in front of Parkhurst and then proceed out Samuel Set onto Manalman Road or through Emerson. With limiting access from Manalman Road onto Samuel Set, you can see on the lower left, as they do not enter during certain school hours. And then limiting access onto Arlington Street off of Westland for just buses kind of only in terms of the entry, but all for families to exit. And then for K five, we're going to ask that no one drop off on Andrews Road, so kind of drop off on Samuel Set and proceed out. But Andrews Road will be reserved for the pre-K. Pre-K drop off on the other tier, and then that will be where the buses will be on Andrews and then kind of pulling into that new parking lot that's up above. See, I think that covers it. On the left is the the new signage there at Lynch. So you can see it's official now. They have logo and everything. And then we've finally made it on the Lincoln Playground side. So we had the new slide installed just this past week. The facilities team went and actually removed that old kind of rubber surface that was there previously. And that gave them access to tear up the old slide and get to the, you can see that concrete in the lower left. It's a pretty large block that was there holding that slide in. They install the new one and then now they'll be installing new mulch this week across the whole playground. And there's an additional slide in the back. You can't really see in this, but they'll be replacing that as well over the coming weeks.
We didn't want to make a big deal out of it, but at at one point I was thinking maybe we ought to do a ribbon cutting or something. We've been waiting for this to get fixed. So but, you know, I think probably we'll just go in go in quietly with it done.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Okay, all right. Also, just to give you just a quick update and a couple more things, one, just want to cover the high school a little bit and have Chris Dixon speak to that. But at Lakin currently, we're still not completely done with some of the remediation work that's happening in the central office offices at the on the on the lower level. Effectually called the garden level. So we are still, we're still kind of mobile central office wise. We are anticipating that that work will be completed by Friday and that we'll be back in there on Monday. So if people are coming by looking for us, which could could happen, just know that we you have email is the best way to get ahold of us right now.
Here you have a new van coming, so maybe you could work out of the van until that.
Work out of the van if 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 we can get enough miles out of it. It's electric, so I don't know.
It's not a freezer time, so you know.
Exactly. So we, as you know, we have some kind of few issues at the high school and some work happening. And we've, Mr. Nixon can speak to both of those topics. I in terms of starting the school year, we I we are unaffected by all of it. So we're we are ready to go within within the building, but Chris, you want to provide just overview or where update?
Sure. So really kind of there are two areas of interest at the high school, right? Let's let's start with the high school gymnasium and then we'll I'll transition to flooring issues elsewhere in the building on the main level associated with some concrete deterioration. So as the committee remembers, for the high school gym, the flooring, that that resilient floor is failing and it's on top of an older floor that I think actually may be original to the building. So Tappy Architects came in, took a look at the twenty eighteen report that had been put together just pre-COVID. They worked with our athletic director, Mark Aria. I think maybe Dennis Mahoney had a little bit of input on it as well. And Andrew was involved to some degree to basically look at that report, talk to Mr. Aria, understand what his new thinking was in terms of maybe reducing the scope a little bit on this project. There are two elements of this. The first is the floors can have to be replaced because it's literally coming apart. We have two options. One is to go with a hardwood. The other is to go back with a rubberized surface. So two decisions to make there. And then with respect to this question of do we or do we not reconfigure the gymnasium? Mr. Aria had a concept of dividing that gym into thirds, turning the room, if you will, ninety degrees. There there's actually another option, which is to sort of split it in half, still turn the gym, but then split it in half again into sort of quarters. There are different costs for that as well. So this report came together last month. The select board chair was especially hot to get a hold of it just to understand at a very high level, what kind of costs are we talking about? And what I can tell you is nominally, think of it as a two million dollar project with two hundred and seventy, I think, thousand dollars of swing between, you know, the cheaper or more expensive flooring option. And then, you know, depending upon how much we wanted to divide the room, how much equipment is necessary. So the cost has actually gone up since twenty eighteen. No surprise there. So Mr. Hopcroft has a copy of the report, as does, of course, Dr. Hackett, Mr. Marin. I think what we would like to do is find some time this fall, shortly after the start of school, to get Mr. Aria to come to the school committee with the architect to kind of walk us through what the issues are beyond what's obvious, like the failing floor. And to learn a little more about what our administration's recommendations are in terms of what kind of flooring we should be going with and what the thoughts are in terms of reconfiguration. So this is not a capital project right now. It it may well become like an FY twenty-six request, you know, eleven and a half months from now. But we're at a point where I think pretty soon we should get a presentation to the school committee. And then we can all ask some questions and come up to speed a little bit more on the need and the scope of this work. So anyway, there's some progress there. That's good. On frankly, though, the more serious issue, which is some of the.
Mr. Nixon, can I ask you a quick question about that?
Sure.
Just a really quick one. In twenty eighteen, I know that the Sports Foundation have been interested in partnering potentially with the school committee on that gym. Is that something that would still be of interest to them moving forward? And at what point would you then bring them into the process?
My understanding, so you are quite correct, and there is a number that has been thrown out previously. I'm not going to share it in this public meeting because I don't know, I don't know if that number was accurate. I also don't know if the Sports Foundation has spent down some of that on other things. But I had this very conversation with the superintendent last week. And and the hope is that Mr. Aria might could be in a position when he comes to speak with us to share that publicly. But also, I think now that we've moved this football a little bit, pardon the mixed metaphor, you know, there might be something that with some discussion and some indication of support on behalf of the school committee about what kind of project we can get behind. There may actually be more of, let's say, a deliverable that the Sports Foundation could use if there's some additional fundraising that they they wish to entertain. So yes, a short answer is my understanding is there are some private donations and I I'll ask Dr. Hackett if he has any further detail he wants to share on that. But I I would expect that would be a part of the conversation.
And that would be a no.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that we we do loop them in if we're talking about having a school committee presentation so they know that's happening. And just make sure everybody's aware that that we're having this discussion again.
Yeah. Excellent point. Glad you brought it up. So then on the other, the other issue with the high school, well, really, there's two, but but they just have to do with some deterioration and failures at the high schools. So we have the some of the spalling concrete and the rust jacking that you all are familiar with. We did a little field trip a couple of months ago while we were at the high school. So S G H has been, they are a forensic engineer. They're fantastic in this role. They sort of specialize in understanding modes of failure and analyzing what the root cause is and then coming up with options to both stop the damage and then repair the damage that's been done. So the E F P B C did hire them. We use project funds to do that. We were able to do so. They actually just wrapped up their investigation phase last week. They have used sounding equipment. They've been on their bellies in crawl space. They've used just a tremendous amount of technology to sort of image the concrete on the lower level. They've also taken core samples of the lower level slab, both in areas where we either know or suspect that there's failure, but also in areas where it 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 appears that actually there's nothing wrong with the concrete at all. That was important to basically establish a control, if you will. So they've taken all of this material back. They have a laboratory. The guidance hallway that we looked at where, you know, we had that vinyl tile that was just bubbling and in really poor shape and we had some safety concerns. That has all come up. But what was great is Chris Conway, who's our, you know, Winchester High School facilities manager there on site. He did reach out to S G H to give their engineers the opportunity to be there to physically witness all that flooring come up and to grab anything that they thought had value. So they did show up and they did grab spalling concrete to bring back to their lab as well. Then we used the cementitious leveller and put down carpet tile. So that that hallway that we visited is now, you know, to the layperson, it looks terrific because it does. It looks good. But the underlying problem has not yet been addressed. So anyway, everything's back at the lab and they're working hard on trying to understand what the root cause is. E F P B C is going to continue to talk about this in September. There is a certainly a strong possibility that we may be looking to, the E F P B C may be looking for an article on the warrant to fund design and engineering work to address this, only because we may not feel we can wait until the spring or certainly another year. But I want to just underscore, we're 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 a long way away from knowing actually what any of this is going to cost. So if if there is a funding request, it's only gonna be for design and engineering. It's not gonna be for the actual work. Um and therefore, you know, we're not in a position to say right now even what the underlying cause is. How widespread the damage is, what the options are to fix it and what they're gonna cost. We're hoping that that'll come into focus very quickly um this month. Um there was some indication in their early, early work, maybe three weeks ago, that that. Some some areas of damage were more widespread than what we had originally thought. So that was disappointing to hear. On the flip side, um it appears that those areas of uh significant damage are the ones that we are already aware of that we've seen. So maybe more deterioration, widespread, but maybe at lower levels than we were worried about. But that's just based on what the team has indicated when they've been in the building. So all of this, of course, is subject to confirmation. As the team continues to do their work. Separately, um you all will remember, we had some pinhole leaks in the piping that primes the uh traps in the building. Um and we've even had additional leaks spring up since we first brought this to your attention back, what was that, May, early June? So we've had some additional areas of deterioration. So there again, Chris has actually cut pipe. He has actually cut out samples of pipe. That go to the lab uh so that they can try to figure out what the root cause is. So just again, making progress there. But basically, the team has gathered everything they need and now we're just gonna wait for them to. Figure out what's going on and then what what the um what the options are to. To both stop it from can, to stop the damage and also to go back and repair what needs to be repaired and how to go about that. Um so I guess that's really all I have to say on my school. Any questions on that? Oh, Michelle has her hand up.
Just a quick one, Mr. Nixon. At what point um would we bring eh? At what point would the the forensic analysis or anything indicate that we would necessarily um be bringing in maybe um? Notification to our insurance company or legal presentation or anything like that? Will that come out of this forensic analysis?
No, that's that's really a, that's a, so that's a separate process, Ms. Bergstrom. You know, the engineers are simply gonna help us figure out what's going on and why and then how to fix it. But um w- we have actually. Respond, you've you've raised this question, I think, at the meeting before last, as has a member of the board. So um Meg White, uh on behalf of engineering and planning, has actually been in um some talks, I think, with the assistant town manager about this. So I can't, I can't tell you what communications have gone out, but my understanding is they have reached out to town council. Um the the issue is, is I understand it is simply, you know, o- once you make that contact, um you know. Folks can start to circle the wagons, right? So I think it's 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 important, it's important. To really understand what the purpose is and that contact and what the messaging is. Um I don't know that. Uh any contact has gone out to Consigliere yet. I could be wrong. I don't know that it has. I think, in fact, we were kind of waiting to get some of that preliminary information from SGH first to learn a little more about what the um circumstances are. Anyway, but management is.
I froze on my side and I don't know if you heard the end. I asked if um the forensic analysis is, will they plan? Let us know what the next steps we need to take as a town and a district would be. Will that?
Sorry, um uh SGH is not gonna make any sort of recommendations in terms of legal strategy. But they but they will be providing information that my, I believe, engineering and planning will look at very carefully with the EFPBC and town management. And then kind of figure out what contact or what in, what messaging there needs to be to uh to the Consigliere team.
Great, Mr. Brady.
Thanks. Just to go back to the gymnasium floor, I I just hope that in the consideration of everything that. You know, we do consider the possibility of our track athletes indoors. It's it'd be nice to have a place for them to practice onsite. So I know that there's certainly possibilities and configurations you can do to spaces if you're redoing the floor. That make them amenable for running as well. You can still play basketball on them. I used to run on a lot of them. PBD, Cambridge Dinge and Latin. Plenty of other places around do it, so it might be worth looking at if we're looking at the whole space.
Mr. Brady, you will be pleased to know that the proposed reconfiguration includes an indoor running track. So um. Can't wait to to find a date. So I'm with you a hundred percent. Um when when we originally were doing the renovation of the high school, one of the things we actually considered. Was a suspended running track. I mean, just the height of that space is tremendous. Um that was a. I I don't even wanna call it a value engineering item. I don't think it ever actually made it into the project, um just cuz we didn't think we could afford it. So um yeah, that 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 is a programming need that's long been um sort of underserved, so I'm happy to know that that's in there. Um and I don't know that it contributes that significantly to the cost, to be honest with you, but I think that's a perfect out, perfect example.
Doesn't, so it will be good to do.
But it's a perfect example of, you know, some of the elements of this that I'd really like the architect to be able to, you know, present to the committee. And let Mr. Aria sort of speak to the the value of that and and other elements as well. So I, we don't have a date in mind for that, but I I suggested to Dr. Hackett that it'd be great if we could do it in September. Um if time permits.
Great. Any other uh facilities updates?
Just, just briefly, um we're gonna talk a little bit later, it's part, kind of powered by uh some evaluation, but uh save to save some safety and security items. But I did wanna mention um that we have added twenty-four new cameras, uh high definition cameras to McCall Middle School. Those are both interior and exterior, so we now have eyes on the uh the both the field and the stadium. The back parking lot. And we have uh much better control, obviously, in terms of uh the back rear doors with those cameras. It's a reminder to the committee, there, some of those cameras will be uh viewable on a monitor within the main office. But it's not the expectation that we have someone sitting there looking at cameras all day. Um anything that's outside of uh entry would be. It's uh really kind of a post-construction of an event that happened, but that's a significant upgrade. Um in fact, I wouldn't even call it an upgrade. I would say really the first installation of a camera system. Um you know, in 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 a broader way than what we've had up to this point. It's been fairly limited. Um as well, we are putting in a new PA system, the PA system, Intercom system at McCall. Uh there's a, there are quite a few few rooms right now that cannot hear it. Uh so that will be, that will be remedied. Likely that work would happen over the December break because it's gonna be um time consuming. And uh we're gonna have people on site in the building to take care of that, so we we need a, we need a window of time to do it. So that's, I just wanted to provide those two upgrades, updates. That's it for me.
Great. Um just one, cuz one other thing I just wanted to add to, just the the, we are still waiting um on EverSource to energize the transformer up there. At Parkhurst for the modular. So it triumphs. It's a company we worked with on the high school on the mods. They've just done an incredible amount of work. I mean, everything's in place. They've done all the interior fit up. I think all the ramps and everything are in place. Is that right, Dr. Hackett? I think it's, I mean, we're we're. The team is land, and Parkhurst itself, I think, is in great shape, but um we don't have any power yet. Um and we're a little overdue for that, but. Um historically speaking, EverSource does put a priority on school districts. They know when school opens. Um we were supposed to have power a while ago and I think we were hoping for it last week and it didn't happen. So um if if you hear a hoop and a holler from um from Lincoln, it'll it'll be Dr. Hackett when he finds out the power is on. But anyway, that that is an issue. Um we don't have power yet, but and it's sort of out of our hands.
The good news is our teachers can get into the modular units. We have figured that piece out, so they will be able to set their rooms up and. Uh everything's there. Also, the cobbies, the the modular portable cobbies showed up uh this week as well, yesterday or today, Andrew?
Yesterday, yep.
Those will be in place. They are, just to warn you, they are, they are big, so um they're double sided, but they are necessary.
Great. Uh alright, the next item is discussion of consideration of all town meeting warrants articles.
So as you know, the Fall Town Meeting warrant closes on the twenty-second, correct, of September. Um this uh is a chance, I, this article, I mean, this item on the agenda really is just a, a chance for you to have a. Some discussion. You do have another meeting, as you know, on the twelfth of September. So if you were actually looking to do something with the warrant, uh you would still have time to vote something um on the twelfth. But um this is really for kind of open discussion.
So this is the warrant Mr. Nixon brought to us um just before spring town meeting. And we didn't really have enough time to um discuss or um work with town hall on some of the issues. That were in this um memo that Mr. Nixon presented. I have. Has there been continued discussion with with town hall about the content of this? What would be this warrant article? I know that this is something that would be um really helpful for the districts to have in place. Um for rentals, but I I don't know where we are, if there's an update. Mr. Nixon, Dr. Hackett?
Just to share that uh in terms of town and school leadership, us and 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 town leadership, we've not yet had a chance to. Uh review and discuss this or um and that has been um, it has been on the docket. We've just had a hard time coordinating schedules over the course of the summer. But I would anticipate within the next couple of weeks, we'll, we're gonna have that, have that meeting.
My, you know, my recommendation, I'm I'm kind of, can I, can I, should I share screen for a moment to pull that memo up, Mr. Hopcroft?
Um yes, I don't have control of that, but.
I don't, I don't know if Andrew can let me do that. Doctor.
Sorry, I was talking and I was muted. Um hold on.
You're still muted.
Yes, cuz I'm talking to a dog. Getting groggy because she's having a meeting.
Yeah, so um. I've made every attempt to make the memo sort of pretty clear. Um and this was also, this was put together with some input. Is not just from Dr. Hackett and Mr. Marin, but also Mr. Rowe uh before he left us. Um th- th- there is a local acceptance provision under Mass General Law, chapter forty, section three. Which if accepted by town meeting, um gives us greater flexibility. Um in terms of hanging on to rental um funds in our buildings. Um and and actually being able to use those for other buildings within the district. Um so uh. I I think these two paragraphs are pretty straightforward. They come right from Mass General Law. Um and if Dr. Hackett, if you could scroll down just just a little bit, Mary Ellen Lannan has confirmed, actually, she she's gone. She's done this more than once, maybe twice over the past four or five years when questions have come up about this. This town meeting has not accepted the proviso that um that is an option for us. Um I think this was pretty important too, just to remind everybody that um although the statute refers only to the funds received being dedicated during. The fiscal year in question to the upkeep of the building, the Division of Local Services has published a chart. Which states that the use of proceeds for capital items slash debt service is quote not prohibited. Um we uh with prior counsel sought some clarification on this. So you know, a- as you can imagine, legislation and regulation cannot sort of. Anticipate every single circumstance for which a district may wanna use money. So they have a chart and they try to categorize spends, if you will, as saying. You know, prohibited or not prohibited. Um and so this is how this was chara- characterized. Our former counsel did see clarification. From DLS and and they, I thought this was very interesting. And then we have this in writing in a legal brief that they they clarified to former counsel. That in fact, proceeds could be used for debt service only if they, but with a stipulation, only if they're related to the rented or leased building. Uh but that's still, um that was very helpful, um because it it speaks to, again, sort of even greater sort of flexibility and options for us. Uh should town, should we, you know, opt to to have this approved by town meeting? Um so if if this were to be approved, sort of three things to keep in mind. This would permit accrued rental revenue to remain in a separate account. Beyond the fiscal year rather than a turnback. It would allow funds to be expended by the the school committee on any Winchester Public School facility. So for instance, if there's, if there's revenue from Kidsborough at Ambrose, um but we, we need the money for something at Lincoln. Or what have you, it it, the dollars are fungible so long as they're spent on district facilities from maintenance and upkeep. Um and that, and then in addition, that clarification from DLS suggested that we even could put it towards debt service. So long as that revenue was coming from the building for which there was borrow. So that is a little bit more restricted. That's not, you know, wide open, but 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 that was helpful. Can I ask Dr. Hackett, if you scroll down towards the bottom, I think we can capture what's left just on the screen. So currently, our rental revenues are encumbered. I mean, they're only spent on the facilities and for where we generate the rentals. Um needs at buildings with no rental stream cannot be met with those encumbered funds. Um and with limited access to building revenue, our facility maintenance needs often go to capital planning where they go unfunded due to higher priority requests. So you know, there could be a situation where perhaps Mr. Lawson really wants to do something at the Mystic School, particularly maybe something quickly. Um outside of the regular capital cycle and perhaps our strategic capital maintenance fund is not in a position to support it. Well, regardless of what we might have in the building rental fund for Mystic. We might have funds available from some other school building that could be put towards that. So again, it gives the district, I think, much more flexibility. Um both to be strategic about um building improvements and maintenance, but also frankly, to be reactive. And um we often do need to be reactive at our older buildings. Um so the the proposal. Um what what I have suggested in the school committee is that we support an article on warrant. To have town meeting accept the local acceptance provision of Mass General Law, chapter forty, section three. Such that the statute would apply to Winchester as follows, and this language then comes directly from the statute. Pending the acceptance of the provision that the monies received from rental or lease shall be kept separate and apart from other city and town funds. Or town treasury and may be expended by the committee without further appropriation for the upkeep of the facility so rented or surplus space, which is so rented. And any such balance shall remain in said account and may be expended for the upkeep and maintenance of any facility under the control of the school committee. So this would be the, that would be the effect, that would be the controlling language. Um. Yeah, and I feel strongly uh we should do it. And I hope the superintendent still feels the same way.
I would just. What I would say is that, you know, when we, when Mr. Nixon was talking about, you know, the the school and school funds and uh our decisions. This really is a uh a supplement to the DPW facilities budget. And we don't spend building rental funds on anything other than maintenance items within our school facilities. And the uh town comptroller makes sure that that is the case. And um there are, you know, plenty of examples to talk about or show that really uh from paying overtime. To our custodial staff through the town, to um to supplementing a project, to just a simple example. When the the floor, the gymnasium floor at at Lincoln was replaced through uh due to the flood. Uh we, you know, we we bought the paint and had the uh DPW facilities paint the bottom half of the Lincoln Gym. Because once that floor was brand new, the the white, the walls really stood out. Um but it's, it is a, it's a revenue or it's a source of funds that right now, uh we can only spend in the building in which they were earned. Which uh we have with with Kidsborough at at our elementary schools that we do, we uh provide. And we have funds that come to every elementary school, which is a good thing. Um but it is truly a um, it's a source of funding. For maintenance of our buildings. So in effect, it um it does, you know, if if we didn't have access to these funds. Um we would either wouldn't be doing the work or the town would need to increase the the facilities uh budget for for school buildings.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Um I'm in support of moving this forward as a warrant article for Fall Town Meeting. I think um, I think it'd be worthwhile to um have a discussion with the select board. And I mean, ideally, it would be great if the select board could co-sponsor this warrant article since money comes through the town. And it would be great to go to town meeting with this as a joint uh joint word article between the school committee and the select board. Um I I think from some discussions I've been listening to recently on the select board around um playgrounds and some other issues that directly affect the schools. I, I'm not sure that there is complete understanding that this isn't the way it already happens. So I um, I think it would be memorializing a practice that people already believe exists as well. So I think that that would be a a great thing to actually have in writing in the supportive town meeting that we can move forward this way.
Ms. Mr. Brady.
I just wanna say I'm in support of the article and I'm just surprised that something like this hasn't been done along. I just want to say I'm in support of the article and I'm just surprised that something like this hasn't been done a long time ago. But I guess I shouldn't be surprised.
Great. Uh, I call Sam's support as well. Um, shall we, um, it seems we have a consensus here. Shall we um, take a motion?
I I would, I would advise you to wait until the twelfth. I think that we uh, need to have a few more conversations, some conversations with town hall and uh, to Ms. Bergson's point. It might be uh, worth trying to see if we can connect with the select board and see um, whether we can get some kind of cooperative. Article, um, and it just kind of gives you all a little bit more time and um, it, but uh, that's obviously up to you.
Well, can can I make a suggestion? So I I I think some gesture of support from the committee would be helpful. You know, th- there isn't. So the article proposal is to, is as it reads, to accept the local acceptance provision and then that this would be the consequence. But but what you don't yet see is an actual article to vote on, right? So this is sort of a description of what the issue is and what we seek to accomplish. We wish to accept the local acceptance provision. That's the purpose. That would be the purpose of the article, should the school committee support it. So um. I think a vote of the committee to, you know, endorse the proposed, the the endorse the suggestion, endorse the proposal would be helpful, Dr. Hackett. And then what 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 we can do then is have a conversation with management and and leadership, the select board. And then actually then put together uh, an article of some sort that could come back to the school committee for further discussion. And that would be actually what we would be voting, you know, as a placeholder to put on the warrant. And we have time to do that.
My, my only stickler process issue with that is, is I don't think we had it on as a consideration of a particular warrant article today. So I think we could come to consensus, Mr. Nixon, for us to um, direct, uh, Dr. Hackett, Mr. Marin. Uh, with your support to present a draft to us on September twelfth that we could potentially vote on.
Yeah, that works. Just just some, just so we're, we're sort of marking the fact.
Five of us together when we do that.
Seems like we have consent to take it to the next step.
Agreed. Um, the four of us of each indicated support, so I I do think we have consensus of the, those who are here, so. Good. Any other discussion on this item? No. Uh, the next item is um, superintendent's uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three self.
Mr. Chairman, just kind of make two quick plugs just related to this agenda item. So I want to remind the committee, I just mentioned this a moment ago. We don't know yet what the outcome will be of the forensic study at the high school. There is a possibility that the EFPBC may be looking for some funding. At Fall Town Meeting for, you know, some design and engineering. As soon as we know that that is happening. Dr. Hackett or I or both will let the chair know about that, um, because I think the school committee would certainly be helpful to maybe jointly sponsor that. But um, we're we're getting ahead of ourselves because we just don't know where that's gonna go. The other item I want to remind the committee of, and uh, this was. You know, I mean, buried in a presentation back in May, I want to remind you all that on this issue of solar at Lynch and whether it's going to be a PPA. Or direct purchased, the select board was looking to buy a little more time before making that decision on direct ownership. And so the EFPBC agreed to basically take on all the design and engineering of solar. As if we were gonna own it. Now, that that's separate from actually purchasing and installing everything, right? But to actually keep the design piece moving. We agreed to take that out of the owner's contingency, not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. So I want the committee to know that the fees came in for that um, under one forty. But we made that decision with the understanding with the select board that when the bids come in for Lynch, if we're over budget. We may actually be seeking to claw back that money from Fall Town Meeting. We don't know yet um, that that's gonna happen, but there may be a placeholder article on the warrant as well for that from the EFPBC. But but if that happens, it's gonna be for the actual amount of those fees, and it might have even been like a hundred and thirty thousand, but I don't have those numbers in front of me. But I just wanted to remind the committee of that because that that's hanging out there. If if the project comes in well enough under budget. That that the contingency is is no longer touched, then we basically let that go. And it's not an issue. But um, if that's not the case, if the project is coming in high, then we're gonna need to go back and grab those funds. That was all.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Uh, Dr. Hackett, uh, self evaluation. Presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this evening, I I really am just doing a kind of a high level um, presentation to you of of my twenty-two, twenty-three. Self evaluation. Um, but I think what I also want to do, and I think even more to the point is kind of preview. A little bit about where I think we're going. Uh, it's kind of setting up both my goals for for next year and the goal conversation with you. And the and the workshop that you're, that you're having on the um, the twelfth of September. It's been a, uh, this year was Ben, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three was was, it was a busy year. And I, as I, as you know, there were um, multiple contract negotiations that were relatively time consuming. And uh, you know, also not, they were, um, let me, let me see how to put this. As as you know, across the state. The um, the MTA uh, encouraged uh, strong stances by by the locals, uh, as they should at the bargaining table. But the the kind of the organized uh, for lack of a better term playbook on the part of the MTA uh, was um, much more clear. And articulated to locals this year, I would say that it has been in the past. I think partly or mainly maybe a product of. Of the pandemic uh, and coming out of the pandemic. Um, but there were, uh, it was, it was, it was a. We were very fortunate to have the the union that we have and the team that we have uh, with you as a school committee, but I would say that, and and I don't have to tell you. All of you know that um, it was, it was energy draining, it was time consuming, uh, it was thankfully very productive. We, we, as a school system, I think, did the right thing. I think you did the right thing as a committee. Uh, and I think that all we had to do was, we didn't have to look too far to see, in fact, really, uh, in our immediate border, town border, there were a couple of communities. One in particular that um, actually uh, walked out. So uh, while that was uh, kind of falling down around us. We were able to stay positive, uh, we were able to come to an agreement, and I think that's a a reflection on both you as a committee and. Certainly uh, on the uh, local DWA. So um, I, and I, and I preface all of that by saying that. It was not your, it was not my grandfather's contract negotiation. It was, it was a, uh, we are kind of in a different era. And um, I think we're gonna kind of continue to see that. Um, and I think the the direct involvement of superintendent in my case. Here, and I know super tense elsewhere, um, was much more intense than it has been uh, in previous years. We also had um, obviously, you know, a lot of work in around Lynch and the construction project. Uh, we had a uh, significant uh, lift and um, the with our um, moving out of Parkhurst and moving Lynch into Parkhurst. So there were some really big um, pieces of work that really kind of fall under the management standard, which is eight or two. And one of the things I I really don't don't like about this process in terms of evaluation is be, it it forces me to tell you. What I did and the the bottom line is, and the reality is, I don't do any of this by myself. And um, I am grateful and thankful to have a strong team uh, of administrators, both in our, in our buildings. Our building principals, our our content directors, our assistant principals, our content coordinators, um, Andrew, uh, Peter last year. As well as um, Jen and Lori, um, and and Heather in the in stead director role. You know, none of this happened without them. Uh, I don't do any of this by myself and and certainly none of it happens. A lot of it does not happen without you. So in some ways, when I go through this process, it's it's not just an evaluation or I don't think about it, just about me and my work, which is what it is. But it's also um, kind of a a reflection on on us as a total team, uh, and you know, with a with a capital team. So um, with that, again, I really just gonna kind of take you through kind of a high level. These are the standards and the indicators that are part of the superintendent rubric. The administrative rubric, actually, building base rubric actually has changed. We we spent quite some time reviewing that with the uh, leadership team. Yesterday at our leadership workshop and I will say that I think the leadership rubric looks much better than how it has in the past. They are, I, my understanding is they are gonna also make changes, similar changes to the superintendent rubric as well as teacher rubric. Sometime this year, I think they'll be rolling out some samples of that for for conversation. But there are four standards, uh, and you can see that there are indicators under each one of those standards. Each one of those standards, uh, indicators also has what we, what they call elements that are um, individual. Descriptors for how do, what do you, what is instructional leadership look like in curriculum for superintendent? What does it look like in? And uh, instruction, what does it look like in the environment or HR? So with that. The overall rating that um, I have um, self evaluated, so for the entire rubric was proficient. Out of those um, out of those categories. Right there and um. And then I just wanted to bring us back to the superintendent, the actual district goals, which we we will, we will be talking about it a little bit. Uh, and we'll be talking about again on the twelfth. So the district goals that we have had for a couple of years now, although these were honed in a little bit more. The District One Goal to continue creating and implementing wider range of authentic and relevant assessments and to meet diverse learning needs, student learning needs. To create school and classroom cultures that support learning and development uh, through the uh, systematic integration of social emotional learning practices. And District Goal Three to support school and classroom cultures that promote inclusive and equitable student learning and development. My actual goals, which I won't read through uh, these, but these were the goals that I have, uh, these are, all four of these are are really multi-year goals. I, which is becomes a little bit difficult when we, when I go into the assess progress towards goals because. If there's, if there's still goals, given that they're multi-year goals, then uh, I not going to, you're never gonna see meat unless. I hit meat and then that would mean that would be, would be transition to a, to a new goal. So I do, I do believe that we've made significant progress on on um, on the goals that I just showed you. Certainly, there's, there's more work to be done, uh, and uh, to talk a little bit in a second as we roll forward. About some of our learnings and I, and and kind of where are we now that we are two years out of, out of the pandemic? And um, you know, what what did last, what did we learn from last year? And I think that in a lot of ways, last year really kind of represented the first. Full year back, just hard to believe that two years ago, when we came back to school, my first year here, we were still masking. We masked all the way into the spring. We had significant absentee um, issues with people getting COVID. The isolation, ten-day isolation period was still in place, and that was just two years ago. Last year, as you know, we we continued to struggle with with staffing, uh, the labor shortage actu- absolutely affected us. We still had issues with uh, with COVID and people needing to be out for those reasons. Um, our kids came back to us uh, in that first year. And you, the, we could see the effects of of disrupted learning for them. It was less so this past year. I I, you know, I think that uh, the year itself was much better and much stronger, and I am really excited and looking forward to this school year. Um, as we continue to move forward, because I think we have made a lot of progress. In terms of my assessment on the actual standards, you can see uh, those, standard one, two, three and four. Instructional leadership, I uh, rated myself proficient. On management operations, I rate myself exemplary. And on family, community engagement and professional culture, I also rated myself as proficient. So. We worked off of this um, two thousand fifteen mission and vision and and document that uh, you had a, you have, you adopted in two thousand fifteen. Actually, um, this was kind of the last really formalized adoption of a mission and values that the school system had had done. Last year, you did some work with this. You had several community, uh, school committee workshops around this. Um, and the leadership team last, uh, last uh, with the summer, I'm sorry, actually spent quite a bit of time on this. Their work included going through each one of these value statements. Uh, and really just charting out what what does, what are your questions around this? What, you know, what do you think this is saying? What do you think it means? How does it apply to us today? Does it apply to us today, given the fact that these are almost uh, pushing, closing in on being ten years old? That work was done in the summer. You did, you did similar work over the course of last year with with committee workshops. In working with the um, leadership team yesterday, uh, I took, we took the feedback that they gave to those value statements. They did the same kind of activity, just chart paper around the room. Everyone had a chance to comment. Uh, and the themes that emerged from those comments from that process were engagement, connections and teaching and learning. You know, and uh, these statements just kind of represent some of the data that we pulled off of those charts, just as support of. The kinds of things that were being said in those, those larger categories. Um, we worked with that yesterday with the leadership team. And we then came, also had some additional um, ideas and 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 current work that we were doing that that were on those chart, pieces of chart paper. Which I pulled out of this, uh, out of those and and put here, mainly because they kind of identify things that we are both doing and working at. Certainly, um, diversity, equity, inclusion, um, the workshop and inquiry models, grading for equity. These, those are initiatives that are are currently ongoing or or philosophically, um, what we are committed to. Um, as as a school district and and as a leadership team and what you've been committed to, uh, certainly prior to my arrival, including. Social emotional learning, uh, which we have made great strides with. So when we, as we continued to work yesterday, we kind of boiled down to what I'm just calling goal area placeholders. Those placeholders for the leadership team that they uh, that they went after yesterday are teaching and learning, wellness and system support. They spent most of their time in and around teaching and learning and wellness. And if you remember from your workshops last year, uh, these were the um, major categories, the kind of the placeholder goal areas. That you identified sustainability, civic engagement, student success, family support and innovation. And as we um, think about moving into your workshop on the twelfth, uh, we will bring to you. Some recommendations around trying to how we meld these together, uh, where we think we see this going for your consideration and discussion. The, the goal for us in uh, coming up with a district strategic plan this year is to really, really focus on the connections. Between the district-wide strategic plan and the school improvement plan. So while it has been the case that. The school improvement plans, uh, which we, like many people, uh, COVID became uh, really the driver of school improvement plans. And it was mainly managing through COVID, we are certainly not in that place anymore. The school improvement plans from the state's perspective, generally, they recommend timeline is to take, is for the school committee to consider those. As an acknowledgement vote, not as an approval vote in the spring of the year, which just has never made sense to me. I don't understand for a lot of reasons. We don't know what the, we we, if we do it in the spring, there's really no informing the budget process. Which, as we know, happens prior to that. Uh, there are some significant pieces of data that we don't have. As we consider what we, you know, where are our strengths and where are our challenges. Uh, it is a difficult time of the year in the spring to even contemplate. Trying to come up with those plans and that kind of work if if you're going to do it well, or or if you're looking to really kind of reinvigorate the plan. So my recommendation would be that you consider the school improvement plans this fall. I have shared with the principals, uh, leadership group that uh, we are aiming for your meeting on the twenty-fourth. As when um, they would be coming before you. Um, so and what the um, the 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 focus will be on tying. Those school improvement plans to the district plan and the work as as we continue and and you will continue on the twelfth. We can talk more at the twelfth, I think, about just kind of what's the community input process, what does that look like, uh, and map that out. The district strategic plan doesn't have to be done prior to the school improvement plans being worked on, just as long as it's it's uh, there's enough articulation of. Of what the uh, the goals are so that the administrators can work from that. And then um, from there, we really emphasize that these plans, the school improvement plans, the district-wide plan. Needs to also inform and really drive the 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 prin- the goals of the principal and and the administration, hopefully also the teachers. But uh, the conversation that we had was that we really. But, uh, the conversation that we've had was that we really want to make sure that, um, our principals are, we, we are, we're tying it in. And so you're, they're doing the work, but they're also meeting their goals. It doesn't make sense to have a separate set of goals from the school improvement plan, from the district plan. They should be all working together, uh, in terms of their actual evaluation process. So that, that is our overarching goal for this year and I'm going to just mute and turn my video off for a second because I need a plugin, hold on.
So as Dr. Hackett does that, I'll just remind the committee that, um, you'll, your feedback. Um, it is due on, uh, September fifth and then we'll compile that into the, uh, uh, the committee's review. Oh, and he's back. Um, so if you have questions, if, uh, Dr. Hackett, were you done with your presentation?
Uh, just, well, first of all, I want to say let's anyone think that, um, I was, uh, I wasn't plugging to begin with. I have a fourteen-year-old dog that just wandered over and just unplugged me, so I don't want to take people to think I was not prepared. Um, I, I would like to cover a couple more things, Mr., uh, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. Um, in, in partly just kind of previewing some of the goal work and it was also a request from the committee at the last meeting. Um, as you know, where we are, one of the goals that you can certainly that you will see this year or goal areas that you will see. Is in around building safety and security. Um, we hit on a little bit of the work that was done this summer with McCall cameras and, and PA system. Uh, but we did, uh, kind of preview for you last time. That we are looking to move to a, a new protocol, uh, that, that is, um, we think very clear and well articulated. I think, we think it focuses on the right thing in a community, especially a community like Winchester. Uh, where we, we have close, uh, and strong connections to not only the local police and fire departments. But the, uh, the police department locally and the network that exists among the regional response teams is extremely strong. Um, and you know, in the end, in, in, as one example of something we need to prepare for, plan for, or think about. Uh, in the event that we have, um, an unwanted, a person within the building, that the response time is the only thing. It's the biggest thing, uh, it's the only thing that is really truly effective. Uh, in getting the, uh, local authorities to the, to the facility quickly. Um, so as you know, we do have an incident management team. That team is made up of faculty and staff members, uh, as well as administrators and also Winchester Police Department, Fire Department. Uh, and we have a, a strong presence, um, of faculty on that group. We have some great people leading that, co-leading that. And, uh, the IMT also has, uh, filters down to building-based incident management teams. So, uh, it's a built-in structure that, um, that you put in place quite some time ago. I, it just, I think it's extremely effective because it just brings more people into, into the conversation. Um, and also into the conversation to talk about things that are more likely and more realistic and the things that we deal with more, you know, more than. Just the, you know, the scariest of all scenarios, uh, the team, uh, the incident management team at their, at their meetings, they meet regularly over the course of the year. Uh, they get reports from each school, for example, so if there's, uh, you know, uh, a broken door. Or if there's questions or there's something that happened at a school that, uh, the team just wants to kind of troubleshoot and get some feedback on. That, that form provides that, uh, it, and it, it informs the rest of, uh, the group. And the, uh, the structure is really set up to be able to go up and down, uh, from a communication standpoint. The protocol that we just kind of flashed in front of you at the last meeting and I won't spend a lot of time on this, but, uh, is a, is a standard protocol. Uh, it's from the foundation of, I love you guys, I don't love the name, um, but it is, um, that is what it is. Uh, there are quite a few school systems that are adopting it in and around us. Um, what I love about it, what we love about it is we just think it focuses on the right piece. Calls that have people throwing staplers and books at people, I, I, the more important piece of this. Is making sure when we say something, people know what to do. Um, and the districts did a good job getting away from, you weren't using, we're not using code blue forty-two. Uh, as a, as a announcement over the intercom, uh, but, uh, it is, um, we've been, we've been over. A, a ret- in and around some language back and forth, there's been some inconsistency with that. And that really is a function of the fact that, um, you know, from the pandemic and then through until last year. We just haven't really gone back to do real kind of across-the-board training on any kind of protocol. Um, although, you know, the information is available and we do have our teachers read it and go through it as, as part of their opening workshop. Uh, working, we're opening day activities and the book, the building-based IMTs to talk to staff about it. But, um, it does standardize vocabulary, it is, uh, based on five. Um, hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate and shelter, those are the five protocols, they are well-defined. I'm not going to go through this with you, but you can kind of see the hold, for example, is a, a good example, one that we use regularly. If there's a medical emergency in a hallway, if there's, uh, you know, the ambulance out front and we just need some time. To keep kids out of the hall so that we can clear it, um, that is probably the one that we use, uh, the most, actually. Um, it happens on a, you know, relatively regular basis. But, um, we've been in, at times last year, for example, um, there's been some kind of confusion around what's a hole versus what's a shelter in place. What's a, um, so we really wanted to, this, this program we think really makes it much more clear. Um, secure is another one. Um, you can kind of see what happens with a secure lockdown, which, uh, is exactly what it sounds. Uh, that is, should be pretty familiar. All these are pretty familiar, which is what I also like about it, so. From a timeline implementation standpoint, we see this as kind of a natural, organic rollout. Um, that people will get these terms, uh, from the beginning. And then giving us some time to do some additional training and work and then evacuate being, um, being the last one. Well, I'm sorry, shelter being the last one. So in terms of a proposed timeline, what we're looking at, um, Andrew and, um, our SRO. Uh, actually did get trained back in, um, early July, um, and we have all the information, we have all the materials. Um, we have had a, a public safety meeting, the three sixty-three meeting, which is required by state law. That happened in August, uh, last week, I believe, uh, I was attending, uh, maybe it was two weeks ago, but, um. So that, that meeting, it happens every single year and it's a good opportunity for us to kind of just re- recapture the relationships, talk about what challenges are. Talk about what our plans are and, and what we're going to do. We will be communicating this protocol to families and to, well, staff and families over the next several weeks and a couple of months. Uh, you will see a new safety page on our website, we will, we will communicate that out to families prior to the start of school as well. So that they know that, um, what we're doing with that, we will update the handbook language to reflect this as well. Um, and then, uh, we will likely do some, um, I will likely do some virtual, uh, meetings with families. Or, uh, cover it through PISC or, uh, update, um, uh, parent associations throughout the course of the, of the fall. Um, and then in October, what we're, what we like to do, and I just want to, not asking to take action on this tonight. But, uh, what we would like to do is to, uh, schedule a, an additional early release half-day. That is not currently on the calendar in order to be able to get, um, our staff trained. Um, the other, um, the part of the piece of this is that. We want to train everyone, but we can't train everyone at the same time. And it's, we believe, important now for us to be working with our faculty in the building. Um, that has been a lot of the feedback that we've received or the IMT has received is that we, you know, they want to be trained in the building. Uh, we think that this is an important step, especially given that it is a new protocol. Um, and, uh, we want to respond to that. I will also just say that we've not done a formal, any kind of formal district training. Uh, since pre-pandemic, certainly it was not in my time, I, I don't know when the last one was done. Uh, and I can tell you, as you heard earlier, with a new teacher orientation today, we have a lot of new people. Um, so I, I think a fresh start is needed, I think we need to, uh, emphasize the importance of this. Um, and, and carve out the time, uh, to, to, you know, to pay attention to it. Uh, and get everybody on the same page and then we would continue with some additional trainings over the course of the year. So again, um, I'm not asking for any action on this tonight, um, I would, um, I would anticipate bringing it back to you. And, and at your next meeting, um, and certainly happy to talk to people if, uh, offline, if you have questions around this. This was not really the intent of to go into a full-blown discussion on it, but I, I thought it was appropriate to bring it up. One, because we will be communicating it, two, because you asked for it, and three, because this is, this will be a piece of work that is, will be associated with my goals. With that, Mr. Chair, I'm done.
Right, um, a- and so I see Mr. Nixon has his hand up and I just remind, um, if to the extent we can. Um, ask Dr. Hackett for additional information, but not actually conduct, um, part of his review here tonight. Um, uh, but go ahead, Mr. Nixon.
Thanks, Dr. Hackett, are we just in, in this realm of student and school safety, are, are we utilizing NEMLEC? At all or differently than in the past? And how is NEMLEC, how are we leveraging NEMLEC, you know, in, in a change like this? Are there, are there NEMLEC districts that are using this new protocol? So it can, I mean, it's a valuable resource, I'm just curious if, if, if we're changing in any way, either our reliance on them. Could you just maybe take a moment and talk about that?
Sure, actually I'm going to let Andrew speak to that. And I believe we have direct representation on NEMLEC.
Yes, yes, we have, uh, participation through our public safety and also members of our IMT, actually one is the. Now the assistant commander, I think, of the region, she volunteers there. Um, so there are other districts, so that training that I took with Officer Chicorello was in Reading. And I know Melrose was there along with a few other districts. Um, so I don't believe all of NEMLEC are aligned with this. Uh, but a lot of our surrounding communities are going towards that, that goal. Um, and it's not, it kind of provides, it's more of a framework and then we kind of hone it to what we want here in Winchester. So it does vary from place to place, but those, that kind of core, uh, protocols are consistent.
Yeah, thank you.
Dr. Hackett, is that, is it, is that all for yourself evaluation and goals?
Yeah, so I didn't have any real fanfare to kind of conclude and, um, but yeah, so to, to your, to your point, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, the, you'll be actually conducting my evaluation at the meeting on September twelfth. I'm happy if any of you individually want to sit down and have questions or go over anything with me. Um, please just feel free to let me know and, uh, definitely we'll schedule something, but, um. I, if, and if there is information, additional information that you would like me to provide, um, just you can email me directly or just give me a call or. Um, or how would you like to communicate that? So I appreciate the time.
Great, thank you, and, uh, it's just another reminder to, to send in your evaluations by September fifth. All right, um, unless there's any other questions there, um, we can move on to the next item, which is discussion of superintendent central office restructuring recommendations.
So consistent with.
I had a quick question.
Oh, Michelle Bergstrom two, um, Ms. Volnese.
Yes, that would be me, sorry, I can't, uh, I'm in the back of the maneuver, can't change my, my name on the fly like that.
Welcome home.
Don't worry about it.
Yes, Ms. Bergstrom two.
I want to know how your name ended up as Michelle in the first place, but.
There will be questions.
When I get a chance, I'll look at this and see if I can replace my name, rename myself. Um, no, I just wanted to clarify that date, um, I thought the date for turning in the, um. Our feedback was, or our evaluation was September sixth, or is it now September fifth?
Um, yeah, I believe. I believe I intended September fifth, but, uh, if you need to until the sixth, um, you know, just for you, uh, that's okay. But, uh, but now if people could try to get them in, we, I need to synthesize and, and beat it all back, so.
Understood, thank you, just wanted to clarify.
All right. Dr. Hackett, do you want to, uh, talk about the restructuring?
I do, and, um, I, you know, just to also kind of, as a segue from, uh, my self-evaluation and from, uh, getting into goal setting. What you're seeing and what we have in front of you, uh, really is a direct result of, of my own self-evaluation. Our evaluation of the school system where we are, uh, a recognition that, you know, we certainly have areas to work on and we have areas in need, like any other school system does. But also to really kind of, you know, resources are not unlimited. Um, and we want to make sure that we are deploying and utilizing the people we have and the resources we have. In a way that addresses the needs that we have and, um, this, uh, proposal. Is exactly, um, an attempt and, and we think the right move, uh, to do that. So you have, you have had in your packet, um, a, a revised assistant superintendent job description. That position is Dr. Ellen Emma's position, um, is part of this restructuring. We would be, uh, bringing all the student services under, um, under her responsibility, including, uh, special education. Uh, it would be, uh, the special education director, um, would be a, a shared report, correct report between me and Dr. Ellen Emma. The, you know, really the, the rationale and the, and the biggest reason for that is that, you know, certainly the landscape has changed, student needs have changed. We know that, um, as we've been talking about for the last couple of budget cycles, that. We have more students who have been referred for special education services, more students who have been identified as needing special education services under. What was an unchanged, uh, criteria from the state, uh, that really didn't factor in anything to do with the pandemic. Uh, we think that that, that bump is, um, is an anomaly, but at the same time. We also recognize it and believe that, uh, there is a, a definite need for a stronger. Uh, line of communication and organization, um, and, and I really, as much as anything. Kind of symmetry between the general education classroom and our special education program. Um, you know, the, the, the questions about how do our students be, uh, become, uh, identified and referred? What are we doing in the classroom prior to that happening? Uh, what are the, the instructional supports that, uh, that are being utilized, how effective are those? But I think as importantly as anything, there's no, um, there's no professional more important. In the lives of our kids than a classroom teacher. And, um, what we really need to explore and understand better. Um, I think is what, what can we do to provide the support that our teachers need in the classroom? So that, uh, our students are being successful in the classroom, which, uh, as you know. Um, least restrictive environment is, is absolutely always, not only the law, but it's absolutely our goal. And, you know, when we have licensed trained professional teachers, they are the ones that we want our kids in front of. Um, and so what, um, you know, how do we make sure that that is being supported? So with, with, um, with special education in particular, that process and because we are, have been using. And you have been using implemented and have invested heavily in a co-teaching model, that really for us is a critical component. Of, of how we provide support for our kids. Um, and because the co-teaching model includes both special education and general education. Uh, we believe, I believe that that connection between the two leadership positions. Um, represented by the assistant superintendent and by the special ed director are really critically important. Um, and, um, so the, that is really the biggest revision in the assistant superintendent's job description. Additionally, um, Jen has handled other areas of, of student support services, like Title One. EL, we, uh, we believe that it's also just makes sense to, to bring into. Uh, into her job description to be the direct supervisor of our SEL coordinator, um, director. So, uh, it's one-stop shopping, it's less confusing, people know where to go. Um, and I, I just think it, it streamlines, um, and makes us more, both more effective and efficient. The second position, uh, is I'm recommending the, um, approval of a, of a job description. For an assistant superintendent for personnel and elementary education. That is also part of this, um, of our effort here and what we believe to, uh, be the need, which is a really direct. Um, strong support and focus for our, um, for our elementary program, both from the sped side, general ed side. We have, um, we have new principals at the elementary level, we have five elementary buildings, you know, you know, and it's always a challenge. Uh, in any school system, especially with neighborhood schools, to make sure that your, our elementary schools are generally rolling in the right direction. Um, that happens in a lot of different ways and I don't think that is the, uh, an issue for us here as much as it is. Really making sure that, again, our teachers in the classroom are getting the support that they need. And our principals are able to provide that support and that we are coordinated. and that we are coordinated, um, among our principals in terms of what we're looking for when we go into the classroom. Uh, and having, you know, kind of that thought partner of, um, a person from the central office who can be immediately accessible, but also be part of solving the challenges that each of our buildings face. Um, you know, again, we have a brand new principal and assistant principal at BO. We have a brand, really, for all intents and purposes, a brand new principal and assistant principal at Lynch. Um, and we, we have a brand new assistant principal at, at Ambrose. Uh, we, you know, we recognize and think that this is an important step for us as we continue to make sure that we're providing our principals who, uh, they ultimately are the ones in those buildings all day long and they're ultimately the ones who supervise, supervise and evaluate our teachers, um, that we are providing them the professional development support that they need to be able to go in, um, and and again, provide our teachers with what they need to to, um, for their own instructional practices in the classroom. Um, so those are really the overarching recommendations for these two job descriptions. Uh, you know, part of what, um, I would share is that we are, uh, we have now hired the accounting manager, uh, Michelle Kingdom. We, we do believe that and will focus on, uh, alleviating some of, of Lori's current responsibilities in HR. We have talent ed that's up and running, which is, has streamlined a lot of different processes for us. That's, that has made us more efficient in HR. We see the accounting manager position having a, uh, an absolute, uh, role with HR in terms of the connection to payroll, uh, helping to support our, our HR administrative assistant on, on issues like, um, FMLA and things that are kind of more payroll benefit related, um, that we believe that, um, that Michelle will be able to take on. The fact of the matter is, and kind of going back to the whole conversation about contract negotiations is that, um, you know, I, I am involved a lot with, um, with the union, with contracts, with, with, when there's a problem, uh, you know, it's, we always have taken a team approach, whether it, you know, is the principal going to to Lori and then Lori and I sitting down, or, uh, if it's something that we, for the discussion, I don't see that changing, but I, I do see that, um, that I, I would be taking on more of a role of being really kind of the direct connection to the union and and taking some of that, I don't want to say this in a kind way, burden off of Lori, um, so that she's not the first stop with a, a union question or a union challenge, uh, that, that that would, uh, now kind of shift and come to me. Um, you know, because I, like I said, I think the landscape has changed, uh, believe it or not, we're not too far away from rolling back into a whole another set of contract negotiations. So, um, you know, the principal work is in, is increasingly complex and the last several years have really been management. And I think that this step is needed to kind of coordinate and calibrate our principals to ensure equity, to ensure that we are, um, providing them the support that they need. Um, and that we, um, you know, we move forward together and we're fortunate, like I said earlier, that we have great principals and we have great staff and this is just, uh, an effort to, and I think a concerted effort, focused effort to, to make that better. Uh, and and partly in recognition that we have some places that we, we need to, um, you know, really consider our our student achievement levels, um, and some areas of focus that we need to, um, that we need a little bit more support on and, um, and and coordination on. So with that, I, uh, would have, be happy to answer any questions or you might have.
And, you know, as, as we think about questions here on, uh, the first two items, the job description roles, um, particularly if there's a lot of uh, input and, and, uh, details on those, we can take this as a first read and, um, and and vote on it at our next meeting, um, unless you're very good with it as is. Uh, but I, I would like to suggest that with appointing, um, uh, Lori Kirby, that we not hold that up and and take that up, uh, tonight as a vote if we could. Um, Mr. Nixon.
Thank you. So, yeah, I do have a question. It actually pertains to the assistant superintendent for personnel and elementary education. And I don't know if Dr. Hackett, you want to bring, do you want to bring that draft up on screen or not, but I, I wanted to just offer, see if I can pull it up on mine. Um, it's very clear that it, it, there's a supervisory response, so, uh, there's a supervisory role with respect to elementary principals. Can you just clarify for us what your expectations are in terms of formal evaluation?
Sure. So with both this position, with the, uh, elementary principals as well as the uh, director of special education, uh, I would be, we would be, I'll be a co-evaluator. Secondly, essentially, I would be the, I would be the primary evaluator of principals and and, um, the director of special education with, uh, secondary evaluation from, uh, um, Jen and Lori, um, for each one of those two, uh, categories.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to be sure if there was an explicit evaluative component of the role that we were capturing that in the job description, but it sounds like that's not an issue.
It would, it's similar to how we have set up for all of our evaluation for all of the positions with a, with a primary and a, and a secondary evaluator.
All right, got it. Okay, no, that was all. I, I think it looks good.
Mr. Brady.
I just wanted to, uh, appreciate this change. I appreciate, um, Jen and Lori taking it on. I think, you know, as Frank said, it's going to help us focus more on student achievement. And I'm very excited. And so when I think about our reading and I think about where we need to work on our reading instruction, I'm excited to know that Lori Kirby can be, help to make that happen. Um, and I think that's just a really great opportunity. Um, to use a sports analogy, Lori is a very talented player. Um, and so I'm just excited to see her kind of much more back on the court. Um, and I think it's going to lead to some really great things. So no pressure, Lori, but I'm very excited.
Can I just add, I, 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 we all know Lori, but for the public who may or may not know Lori, um, I think it is important to, to note that Lori has taught in the Winchester Public Schools, uh, and she was a longstanding principal at the Morocco Elementary School. So she, she's, she's not your, she's not your everyday, uh, HR person. Um, she came into that role and with a different set of skills and and a, and a unique set of skills. Um, and does a fantastic job in that role. Um, and it's, it's just such an asset to have someone who has that administrative background in central office and a personnel role. Uh, and I also just wanted to add that, you know, while this will change her, her role, um, she does, uh, she is in the buildings a lot and she does work with the principals a lot. So, um, you know, the, from a time perspective, it, it will change some. Uh, but this is, it's not like she's taking on an entirely different aspect of, of a job that she's not currently doing. So we just think about the time management component. Um, and again, uh, both with this position and with Jen's position, um, yeah, I'm not, uh, giving up my, my supervision roles. I, I, but I know, I'm, I'm honest with myself that one, I didn't teach at the elementary level. I'm not an elementary expert. Uh, and two, um, I can't provide the, the level of support that I think is needed, um, in either one of these areas right now.
Uh, Ms. Bolanese.
Thank you. Um, no, I just wanted to say, I thank you, um, Dr. Hackett for speaking a little bit about, um, Miss Kirby's background, um, because I think that is very important to stress how much of a part of the community of the Winchester community that she has been over these many years. I even found her picture in the VO class, fifth grade class pictures, um, recently from many years ago, teaching there. Um, and I know her, and I know her time at Morocco as well. So thanks so much for bringing that all up. Um, and I think this is, um, in line with what Mr. Brady was saying. Um, I'm very appreciative and, uh, supportive of these roles. And.
As well as they were. Audio.
Punking around in, in the tunnel. Um, anyway, I'm very supportive. I am very supportive. I will just say that. And, uh, my only question was on the, with respect to the town's comptroller office. Um, with the director of personnel no longer being, um, having as a duty, um, helping or overseeing health and life insurance benefits. Is that because that is going to the new accounts payable manager? Is that what you were just saying?
No, I'm sorry. Uh, that's a great question and good clarification. Um, benefits, uh, health benefits, all other benefits is still a function of the town. We don't, we don't handle the benefits, as you know, but, um, there are things that are kind of benefit related, like sick time, like FMLA. Um, if people have questions about their benefits or deduction that happens, sometimes that's, those questions start with our payroll. Um, and you, right now, actually Nancy Clark, our payroll clerk, uh, ha- handles a lot of those. Uh, as does, uh, Marie in our, our, in our HR office, uh, uh, and Lori. But, um, so my point really is that I think Michelle can, she's not here just to be an accounting manager. We're fortunate enough that she's worked, um, as a finance person on both a, a town side, different towns, and she's worked. Um, and she's has, she does have HR experience through payroll experience. Um, I believe where she is right now, where she's coming from, actually, that particular school system does budget for their own benefits and manages their own benefits instead of the town. So she has a good experience base that, um, I think will help to make us stronger, um, and provide another, you know, really good set of eyes and and support in, in HR.
Great.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I'm also supportive of these, um, revised job descriptions. I think that in some cases, they, uh, more clearly articulate the job um, that these two individuals were doing for the district and also, um, change their roles in a way that really plays to their strengths. And I think that's, um, really important for the district, for educators, for families, for kids, to, um, have people in these particular roles who, um, who have uh, the, the kind of strengths that Lori and Jen have to offer. I, you know, we only have one middle school and one high school. So our middle school and our high school are always going to be aligned, but with five neighborhood elementary schools, um, it's in a standards-based state, it can often feel like, um, one school might be doing something differently than another school. And to have somebody who has the ability to get into the buildings and, um, be working with the principals at all five of those elementary schools together, I think that, um, it just provides us a stronger, uh, district and a stronger um, base for making it feel like we have one singular elementary program, even though our schools can still have, um, unique features to them that make them, make them their own as well. So, and I, um, I was part of the committee when Lori was appointed to, um, the personnel director, and I know it made a lot of sense to our committee at the time because, um, it's really helpful to have somebody in the role of a personnel director who understands what it's like to be a teacher or a staff member or a principal in the district. And, um, so I have really enjoyed that Lori has been able to bring that to this role and, um, just love the ability to be able to expand that for her.
And I will, uh, echo that I, I think that the consistency, the coordination and the opportunity to, to learn, um, and share best practices between the schools and, um, you know, and really just the clarity of, of the, the work that you're doing and, and, uh, you know, upping things, um, i- is really wonderful here. Uh, I'll go to Mr. Brady, uh, before I, I, I get to the rest. Mr. Brady.
Oh, I was just gonna, I don't know, Dr. Hackett, if you want a motion on number three or, because we don't have to approve this, but however you want to do it.
I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, I, I, I thought you, you had feedback. I was, I was actually going to ask the committee, um, uh, just I wanted to, uh, since it sounded like there was consensus across those, if people wanted to take the vote on those tonight or if they wanted to, to have more time to consider that before the next meeting.
I'm happy to vote tonight on both and make the appointment.
On all three.
And I would second that. If that was a motion.
But just to clarify, we don't have to appoint, right, Frank? Because you, we only appoint you and, uh, the financial person, so.
Well, it's a good question, Mr. Brady, but, um, there, uh, you, the, you, the interpretation that I've heard for several years now is that you do appoint, um, the assistant superintendent in any capacity. Um, and that, you know, it's not entirely clear in the ed reform, but that has been the recommended practice, certainly business, me, office, me, uh, school nurses, for example, which is, uh, a weird one. Um, but a special ed director, but, um, it is, uh, the, the practice, the recommended practice from legal is to also appoint the assistant superintendent, I think partly because, um, it really, it, it could be, you know, they could have to step in for the superintendent at any particular point in time.
I think the way we actually voted to accept the recommend, the superintendent's recommendation. I think that's the language we've used before.
And that's how I tried to word it on the agenda.
Yeah, however you want to do it.
Ms. Bolanese, did you have a, uh, your hand is up?
You might just not.
I was not aware that my hand is up, but I was just second taking a motion if there was a motion.
Okay, um, do we need, can we take this as a single motion or do we need separate motions?
I mean, we could say, I, that we-
I think you should, I'm sorry, Dan.
I was gonna say, do you want to make separate motions? I can.
I think you can approve one and two together. I do think you should have a separate motion for three.
I would move that we approve the revised assi- assistant superintendent job description and approve the assistant superintendent for personnel and elementary education job descriptions as presented.
We'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Ms. Bolanese?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the, the, um, so the two roles have been approved. Uh, is there a motion for, um, uh, the next recommendation to appoint Lori Kirby?
I was gonna move that we accept Dr. Hackett's recommendation for the appointment of Lori Kirby to the position of assistant superintendent for personnel and elementary education.
All right, so, uh, Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Ms. Bolanese?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Congratulations, Lori. Um, your, your official map.
We were all clearly ridiculously excited to do that, too, Lori.
Your kind words are just very touching to me and I just so very much appreciate this opportunity. Um, so thank you.
We're very excited and we, um, uh, you know, both for you and and for the, uh, as Dr. Hackett had said, you know, the way we're thinking about restructuring the district and and really supporting the students and teachers, so.
And I am excited for myself. I know that sounds selfish, but I just have to say it out loud, so, thank you.
All right, so, um, uh, moving on our, on our agenda, future meeting dates are September 12th is the Goals and Data Workshop and September 26th. And are there any other business items or anything? Uh, Ms. Bergstrom?
Do we go back to our six o'clock meeting time on September 12th or are we starting a little earlier? Or?
I believe, I believe we did set the time on that for earlier. Hold on, let me. I have it for five o'clock, but I don't remember if that was actually on the calendar that you adopted or I do think it would be good if we could start a little bit earlier and it will be in person.
That works for me.
So, for what else? Mr. Nixon?
Right now it does, yes.
All right, so we will, uh, meet on September 12th at five o'clock. Uh, and with that, I think we're.
Motion to adjourn.
Only item left is, is the motion to adjourn, yes. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Ms. Bolanese?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Lori. Good night.
Good night.
Have a great first day, everyone.
Hey, we will.
That's right, exciting.
Great tomorrow for you.
Oh, good luck.
Good luck.
Good night.